Okay, I just, let's see here. I know. So I hope.
I don't know if they're via Zoom, so I don't know who's online right now.
Okay. I do see Carl. Hi, Carl. But I don't see anybody else from either the council or from the planning commission. Yeah, that's Carl. Oh, Rob, okay. I can't see who's who. Oh, I see. Okay, yeah. All right. And just for the record, I did get a call from Chuck Owen, and he's not going to be able to be here tonight. And just in case we run over an hour, Brendan has a business engagement that he needs to be at around seven. So when you see him get up and go, it's not to be rude at all. He's just getting up and going to another meeting. Yeah, so I will say for the record, everybody is here then, instead with the exception of Chuck. And with the planning commission, we have.
Just me and Danielle.
Yeah, Joe Fatizzi and Danielle, Danielle Freiburger. So maybe this will be a quick meeting anyway. I don't know. So do you want to lead us off here?
Oh, okay. Well, it sounds like you had, you wanted to talk about the agenda.
So well, with item one, it's just, this is just for information only. We're not going to discuss it tonight. There's still things that need to be decided before we bring it before the planning commission. So we're going to pull item one at this point. So moving on then to item two, the update on the 2021 comprehensive plan amendment.
All right. So first of all, wow, I'm a little out of practice. I haven't done this in a long time.
Can I request we do the flag slower?
Oh, yes.
Sure. Yeah, you bet. We usually don't bet for the work session.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay.
All right. So first in session, in-person meeting for a while. Let's see. And I usually sit over there, so I'm totally, my bearings are totally off. Excuse me. So this is our semi-annual get-together, the planning commission and the city council. Generally, we use these meetings for casual discussion between the planning commission and city council. And if there's any unique topics coming up, I usually give also updates on our comprehensive plan update. We do the, one time a year, we have comprehensive plan updates, and that usually takes much of the year. But this year, we only have two zoning amendment requests. One from the Bucko family on a piece of mixed commercial land that they have. And the other from, and they're requesting to change that to multifamily. We have not started any of the review for the comprehensive plan amendments yet because the planning commission's been busy working on items that the city council has asked them to work on. So we're getting ready to start in September, the, these two zoning updates. The first being the Bucko request. They've got, I want to say it's about 10 or 15 acres of, 10 to 20 acres of land off of Cook Road that is now zoned mixed commercial. They've requested to have it zoned multifamily. So we'll begin that process hopefully next month, depending on availability of the planning commission's and staff's schedule. In addition, the other rezone request is a holdover from 2020. It was a request to change three acres of mixed commercial land out at the golf course at the corner of Portobello and Fruitdale Road, and that's owned by Bob Ruby. He had requested in 2020 to change it from mixed commercial to residential five to match the rest of the golf course zoning. And we ran that through the planning commission process. They made a recommendation to the city council. And early this year, or late last year, forgive me, I forget when exactly it was, the council said, let's, we, the council wanted the planning commission to take another look at it. So it's going back to the planning commission for review, and again, we hope to start that later this month. These are just standard rezone requests. I just wanted to give everybody an update of where we, where we are on it. I'll be frank with everybody. It's been a very, very busy year in the planning and building department. And we've been adjusting to life without a full-time building inspector, and we're having a hard time finding anybody to apply for the job. So we've been doing, oh, I've been doing a lot of the building inspections on top of trying to do the planning work. And so it's, it's tied me up, my availability to do things like work on zoning requests. But, you know, work is there, and I need to get it done. And so we have, I want to also introduce to you, we have a new assistant planner. Some of you may or may not have even met her previous assistant planner, but she retired so she could go to grad school in Norway. And then we just recently, at the beginning of the month, hired, well, last month, I guess, hired Nicole McGowan, sitting right here behind me. This is her first meeting that she's even had the opportunity to attend. She hasn't, she hasn't been around for a planning commission meeting yet. So it's her introduction to the city council and a couple of the members of the planning commission that are here today. So Nicole's getting, getting up to speed quickly, and that's going to help tremendously with staff, staffing in our department. And so we'll have time to work on these higher-level things. We, you know, we've got project review, which we kind of have to take care of when it's in front of us. We have statutory regulations that require that building permits and long plats and conditioners permits and those kind of things be processed in a timely fashion, whereas these long-range things such as zoning requests, updates to the design review standards, updates to the municipal code, there's no timelines on those. So those are the ones that are honestly suffering a little because of the lack of staff time to manage all of them. So I apologize for that. We're doing what we can. But we are getting on with the 2021 comprehensive plan amendment process later this month. And not a lot to say about that. I just wanted to let you know where we're at. That's my update for, that's my update on the 2021 complan process. We also use these meetings just to have some FaceTime between the city council and planning commission if there's anything that, any burning questions. It's, it's good to get everybody together once in a while and see if there's anything that needed to be discussed. So we usually leave a little bit of time for any specific items that the city council members or the planning commission members wanted to talk about. And of course, staff is here to answer any questions that either of these bodies have for us. So I guess we can just move on to part three of this meeting now, which is just kind of open for, for discussion.
Before we move away from the comprehensive plan, so with some changes made to the GMA, is that going to impact our comprehensive plan and what we need to be looking at?
I'm trying to think of all of the changes. Yes. I do not recall at the moment if there's anything major. There were changes to the accessory dwelling unit regulations that the state passed, but then the governor vetoed all of the stuff in it that would have caused us to have had to change our ADU regulations. So we dodged a bullet on that one. There's actually nothing we need to do as far as changing our accessory dwelling unit regulations currently. Maybe next year, they'll take another shot at it and see what happens.
So what about the housing? Because I know they've changed up the housing.
There's some incentive programs to allow additional duplex and triplex-type housing in single-family zones. We can look at doing something like that. Right now, there's not any, I think we've, we're past any cycles for Department of Commerce grants to do updates. There is a housing question. There is, would you, I know what you're speaking of. Would you fill in my memory a little more?
So it sounded like it was almost mandatory that every city is going to have to look at their housing, and they, and that they do want to open it up more to, I guess it would be mixed dwellings. I'm wondering, is there a possibility that we, especially if it's something that's going to end up being mandatory? Because I know that you're right. I think there's going to be grants out there, but I think we're also going to be regulated to do that. And if we're going to be regulated to do that, can we actually specify areas that we want to see that happen? I'm sure we don't want to see that happen in some of our, I don't know, more historic areas. But, but where would that go? And what, what would that look like?
I'm trying to recall any specific legislation that is, that passed. I guess that's been all the way since January. So it's a little far from my memory right now.
Yeah, there were, there were, there were several things that were passed that were.
And I believe I even, I believe even at the last council work session, I updated the council on that. Let me check the.
Anyway, that would be something that I would, I guess I would ask the planning commission to take a look at, something that they would, what they would recommend as far as where we would develop that kind of housing? And what would be the regulations around, surrounding it?
Madam Mayor, just a comment on that, because that is a good point. Our R7 and R5 zones are pretty tight to begin with, really, when you think about your setbacks and the kind of quality of housing you want to put in there. So I'm trying to visualize. I mean, do we want it to look more like an R15, which we don't? I mean, that is not what we want to do. When it hits Olympia, sometimes when it hits Olympia, you don't know what comes back at you. I'm actually curious, how far off on the ADU proposals in Olympia? How close were we? Because we, I thought we did a pretty good job on what we allowed. I mean, we let, we, we had some pretty decent latitude, right down to the size of an ADU. It was really a small, single-family home.
Well, the, what, what the council, what the legislature passed and what was vetoed out of it was requirements that cities, first of all, allow ADUs. Second of all, have, remove any homeowner occupancy requirements. So most cities have a homeowner occupancy requirement, which means in order for you to have an accessory dwelling unit at your, at your house, you need to live there. So that prevents somebody who has a rental house from converting the garage at that rental house into an ADU. And that was, you know, that's what has always been within the city council's purview, and a lot of cities have chosen to do that. But the, the ADU advocates and the housing advocates in legislature insisted that, that mandate causes fewer ADUs to be built. And it made it harder for affordable housing to be built. And that's what the legislature ultimately approved in ADU legislation. There were some requirements to, to remove any requirements for an onsite parking for an ADU. So currently, we have requirements that the, if you have an ADU at a single-family home, you need to have two off-street parking spaces for the home, and then just one space for the ADU, which we found appropriate because ADUs are generally three to 700 square feet. We max them at 800. The three applications that we've received in the last year have all been for about 450 feet. So they've chosen to do, keep them small. And in a size like that, you generally have a single person, possibly a couple. So max two parking, two parking spaces, but usually just one parking spot used. They, the legislature also said that you cannot have a max number of people in a unit. We said, I think we have something that says, I forget, three or four people max in a unit. And that's a bit of a struggle to regulate. So honestly, if the, if that was stricken, that's, that's really okay because it's difficult for the city to go knocking on the door of an ADU and say, "Do you, do you really just have three people living here? We suspect you might have more." That, that's very difficult to do. So, but, you know, just by having the regulation there, the people that follow rules will certainly follow those regulations. And that's generally what we see with the ADUs in the first place, is people that follow the rules, apply for the permits. People that don't follow rules, just having, you know, convert a garage without telling anybody and, and just do it their way. The whole purpose of the ADU regulations, well, one of the major purposes that we have ADU regulations is to provide some assurance of health and safety. Because we don't want people just doing something not to code and kind of scary, you know, fire life safety-wise in, in a building somewhere and renting it out to some poor unsuspecting person that is desperate for housing and can only afford a certain amount. So that's, that's one of the reasons that we do have requirements for it. So.
I've got a question for you. Back there in, somewhere in your, your information, you talked about incentives. What is an incentive and what kinds of incentives and from who?
For ADUs?
Yeah, I think that's what you were talking about. You were talking about getting, the city would receive incentives?
Oh, okay, earlier today. So.
What is an incentive and what?
So the, the State Department of Ecology was given money through legislature, put money aside for planning grants. So cities that followed a menu of items such as allow, allow duplex housing in all parts of their single-family zoned neighborhoods. And maybe a couple other similar housing things, like allow fourplexes in their duplex zones. So things that allowed upzoning into zones that now are limited, then they would give you money to do your planning for it. So it might be $20,000 or something like that, maybe $10,000 or $20,000 to, for the planning, you know, pay for the planning department to do the environmental work and staff time of actually changing the rules, you know, goes to the planning commission and then through the city council. So there's several, you know, it takes a lot of staff time to make those changes. So the state was giving money out to jurisdictions that were willing to do upzones, to pay.
Is that something that you, the city of Cedar Woolley pursues?
We did not pursue that. It was, it was a very limited timeframe. That was in 2019 that, that was available. There was talk of in 2021 having money available for something similar. But I was unable to follow it, which has been too busy to, to search out grants like that.
Thank you.
But if it's something that the city council is really interested in, you know, that changes or shifts our priorities and, you know, we can look into those sorts of things when they become available and find a way to get the work done, the other work done.
So it sounds like you just don't have the time to pursue them.
Yeah.
Would it be, now would it be a good deal if you had the time? Because, you know, just because you can get a grant doesn't mean it's a good deal.
No, you're absolutely right. And I haven't chased down how much money a small city like Cedar Woolley would have been. It's generally, they allot by the, the size of the city. So say it's $20,000, you know, that, that's a significant chunk of a planner's wage for the year. So, you know, that might be worth it. But the flip side is, does the city council even, or is the city council even interested in allowing duplexes in the multifamily, in the single-family zones? So there's a lot of discussion here. These are higher-level issues that, you know, they might throw a pittance of money at us, but they're real hard questions that the city council and the planning commission are going to have to study hard. So it's, it's real work to get through. And so the answer is, it depends on how long it takes us. And if the city council's not really interested in seeing upzones or allowing more ADUs than we currently do, or whatever is on these menu of items, is that something that the council would be interested in doing?
Can I throw this out there? So if they're going to throw you 20 grand for something like that, now you have to absorb that additional density, and you have to service that density, police, fire, schools, sanitation. So just because somebody like you said, somebody because they, they waive a $20,000 check doesn't mean you're getting 20 grand at the end of the day. It might cost you 100 for everyone you put on in. Also, just a quick pause, let the record reflect that our planning commission role has been updated. Commissioner Johnson is now in attendance. Thank you.
So, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't necessarily affect the overall number of people in the city. It just makes, the goal of these legislative changes are to encourage cities to allow types of housing that are less, that are more affordable for people. But sometimes, you know, historically, cities have said, "We don't want a lot of duplexes. We don't like a lot of triplexes and fourplexes," because there's a stigma around multifamily housing. And if you have a single-family neighborhood, there's grown to be this expectation that in a single-family neighborhood, it's a single family. It's not mixed types of development. And legislature and the housing advocates are trying to change that perception in the state, for better or for worse. I mean, there's, there's good and there's bad. And that's really up to each jurisdiction to decide what they want to do.
So is there a possibility that going through the planning commission and then bringing it back to the council, we can designate certain areas as being multifamily or strictly, I don't know, townhouse or duplexes or whatever? I know that there are some town developments where, you know, you have your single families, and then the outside of that is your, is your, it would be a multifamily, and then outside of that would be your urban and your industry. And so can we, can we designate that kind of thing?
Yeah, so I'm, excuse me, as I'm looking around, looking around for a zoning map. So currently, the way their city is, is zoned is right where we're at. Down in the center of town is Central Business District. It's mostly commercial and resi, commercial and retail-type uses with some older residential scattered around. And we're encouraging more commercial down here. And then along Highway 20 is mostly mixed commercial, which is, you know, car-oriented development, McDonald's, those sorts of things. But we do allow for a little bit of residential above some of those. We haven't seen much of that.
But don't we allow that for downtown? I mean, downtown, some of those, those buildings and those buildings, it is businesses below, but people are living up above. And we have had a couple business, or buildings that have been bought, and they've been bought by individuals who want to live up above and then have businesses down below. So we're doing that actually within our downtown area, correct?
Yes, thank you. So in this, in the Central Business District, along with the commercial that we're encouraging, we're encouraging residential above. And that, the idea is to have more. And that, the idea is to have more people in the downtown area while at the same time keeping it a commercial area. So not just allowing apartment buildings, but if you do an apartment building, it's going to be above a commercial space. So we continue to have a downtown viability and grow and strengthen our downtown area as a commercial place, a destination where people come, a center for our goods and services, places, you know, where people congregate. Then, you know, we work out from there. We have our industrial neighborhoods kind of pushed to the edges of town and other places where they, in theory, have less impact on the neighborhoods around them. And then we have a mix, an R-15 zone. That's the residential 15 units per acre. That's our very typical apartments area. That area is set aside for apartments. We don't even allow single-family houses on them under most circumstances. We do, we do have some ways to allow it, but mostly it's meant to be where apartments go. And then from there, we have the residential seven zone. That's most of everything south of downtown. The old platted lots from the 1800s and early 1900s, everything south State Street, well, even, even from here, south, all the way down to the rivers, mostly for, for most of that part of town, there are lots that are 40 feet wide by 120 feet deep. And some people have accumulated two, three, four, two and a half, various amounts of those. And that's what you see down in that part of town. And duplexes are allowed on a lot if you have 9,000 square feet in that neighborhood. But that's the extent of the multifamily that's allowed in all that vast swath. I think it's about 600 acres of our 15, of our seven zone. Whereas I think we only have 78 acres of our 15 zone. So it's a very small amount compared to, you know, roughly 700 acres of our seven. And then north of Highway 20 and some other fringe areas, far east side of town, is our R-five zone. That's strictly the single-family residential neighborhood. That's all you can build there. And that's what the legislature is addressing. They're trying to get more mixed-type housing in the, in zones like that. Our R-seven zone, like I said, already allows duplexes. There's definitely limitations, lot size requirements. We don't allow more than, they're not allowed to be adjacent to each other. There has to be two single-family houses between a duplex. And that's to avoid things like, there's some neighborhoods just outside of town in our urban growth area that is all duplexes along there. And we see a lot of absenteeism ownership there and the neighborhoods just haven't been upkept as some of the single-family neighborhoods. So that, our reaction was to not allow a whole street just to become all duplexes. The R-five zone, as I was speaking, is a single-family neighborhood. That's 1,200 acres. So that's the vast majority of our residential zone, but they're also 8,400 square foot minimum lot size. So you're getting far fewer people in that area because A, its lot size is bigger and B, you're not allowed to have any types of multifamily, even duplexes out there. So legislature is trying to encourage those areas that, you know, housing advocates will say, that's, that's a, that's a pretty heavy impact. You know, a lot of cars, a lot of people and a lot, like a few people in a large area, that just creates more traffic. Whereas areas like our downtown and south with our historic housing, smaller lots, more people in that area, you're able to serve those people better with less land. So these housing grants would be, or these planning grants would be to encourage us to allow more duplexes in like the R-five zone, since we already do allow in the R-seven. Maybe they'd also, there might be opportunity for us to do fourplexes or something in the R-seven zone, which we currently don't do.
So is that something that the Planning Commission can actually discuss? I know that they have a vision, yes?
I'd like to add into that. So what we did was, that's what the planned residential development zone is. Well, it's actually just part of the code. So you can take the R-five and seven, if they're three acres or higher, and do that whole mixed composition of townhouses, duplexes, single families, as long as we have three acres or more. We have a couple of projects right now going on in town with that. So we do do that. However, to just apply that, like duplexes or quads to the straight-off five, seven alone, regardless of the parcel size, no, we don't do that. And that should be open for discussion. But the PRD does accomplish, I think, a lot of the things that Olympia is proposing that we already do do. And we do have projects that are active right now underway, so.
So if I could fill in some of the.
Yeah, definitely.
Some of what Commissioner Fatisi was saying, he's absolutely right. There's always exceptions. We do allow a certain amount of duplexes and townhouses in the R-five zone when it's part of a planned residential development, which is a new subdivision. That's balanced out with, it's also required to have larger lots and more open space around. So, and what he was referring to is any subdivision, if you have at least three acres, actually, I think it might be five acres.
It was three.
And you want to subdivide that, then you can do a planned residential development. And we have applications in for two planned residential developments that we're reviewing right now. Actually, Brickyard Park on McCarrville was a planned residential development. And so there'll be some duplexes in there, although that's the R-seven zone, so duplexes are allowed in the R-seven zone anyway. There's lots of nuances. I was just trying to give you a broad stroke of single-family zone, kind of single-family zone with some duplexes, that's R-seven, and then our apartments, and then our mixed commercial and central business district. Those are all the areas where we allow residential, all sorts of different housing types allowed in each of those. Of course, we could also throw in the urban village mixed-use overlay, which is a commercial zone, but allows for higher-density residential in exchange for some higher design review and, you know, commercial space has got to be part of it.
Okay. Oops, I'm sorry.
No, I was just.
I've got a question for you, John. It seems like we want to keep going higher and higher on some apartments now. Do we have the capability, the fire department, to go five stories up?
Oh, yes. When the city acquired our ladder truck, gosh, it's been, it's got to be more than 10 years ago. One of the first things the fire department did is said, okay, so now we can, now we can accommodate higher buildings in town. And so they, we worked with them to change our height limitations based on their fire department's capability. And so we have a matrix and it says, you know, you can go up to 60 feet tall as long as they basically have room around the building to get their truck and use it. So that also helped with industrial development to allow bigger buildings, more square-footage buildings to attract, you know, industrial building, industrial businesses into the city.
Okay, thank you.
So that was a lot with the comprehensive plan. So did you want to move on to open discussion then? See if there's things that the council would like to ask or request?
Yeah, go for it.
I have nothing to say. I already have it. But it really is great to see everybody. Danielle? Eric?
I have nothing to add.
I've got an old-time question.
All right.
Is it still legal for, to put a marijuana manufacturing plant in residential area? Remember where they changed it, so?
As long as the residential, so yes, in the R-15, in the R-
Pardon me, could you repeat the question, please? It wasn't in the microphone. Thank you.
You want me to turn it on, Carl? How's that? Anyway.
Thank you very much, Kevin.
You know, a number of years ago, the City Council passed an ordinance so they could put a marijuana manufacturing plant in a residential area. And you had to have 15 acres or something. But I've always been, I've always thought that'd be, that should be one that we should rescind.
Yes, I'm looking it up in the municipal code. I know exactly the code of which you speak. It is, and it is 15 acres.
I got something right.
Yeah, there was, it was actually kind of a request for, when, during the big boom time of the marijuana.
Yeah, a group of people came from Seattle and kind of bought their thousand ordnance.
Kinda. I don't think they actually paid any money for it, but they, they did get it. If you have 15 acres, you're allowed to have a marijuana grow op in the R-five zone. Funny story about that is the minute that the council passed that, that one particular piece of land that was large enough to accommodate it, the price suddenly jumped up almost double. And so it didn't happen. And now it's a subdivision. So that lands out of the mix. But yeah, if that's something the council would like to see, to have the, sorry, I need some cheaters. I'm trying to, trying to read something, so I have to hold it far away. Looking specifically in the code for where that is. I'm sorry, I'm just not able to find it that quickly. But we can bring that up and look to.
I don't know what anybody else thinks, but I've always been, thought that one should be rescinded. You never know what could pop up in the future.
Can I ask a question on that? Because I deal with the commercial side. So it's a minimum 15 acres in a residential area to put a grow operation? A minimum 15 acres? So anyway, a tier-three license, which is the highest in the state of Washington, only allows you less than one acre of canopy. What they're doing is, they're doing these, you can actually just go down the highway here, right in Lyman. So basically, you would be preserving 15 acres, let's say 14 and a half, with a building that needs to be totally landscaped, that you don't even know is there. So what's the plus or minus? Do you want 15 acres of houses? Or do you want something out there that's so passive that you don't even know it's there? So if you're saying a 15-acre minimum, you can't grow 15 acres with the cannabis. You're limited to 30,000 square feet of canopy, or an acre is 43,560. What they're doing is, they're going up multi-levels in these buildings. So it's a plus or minus as to what type of impact you want. But 15-acre minimum to grow less than an acre of cannabis that's probably going to be inside a building, because you've got to keep it on sun or light on it 24 hours a day? That's a balance sometimes. It depends what people are looking for. And that's all I'm throwing out there. So you're not growing 15 acres of butt.
No, and it was never intended to grow 15 acres. What it was intended is, somebody had found a piece of property that they, they could put their grow facility, which would have been an indoor facility. And what it says is cultivation of marijuana is considered to be a production of, product for resale. Production of marijuana is limited to the following zoning districts, industrial. And then the only other place besides industrial is a residential five zoning district on lots 15 acres or larger. Perimeter landscaping, buffering, where all marijuana production locations in the R-five district shall be at least 25 feet wide. An eight-foot-tall, 100% sight-obscuring fence wall or other screen of equal effectiveness shall be maintained around activity areas. So that was, the idea was tuck it way back in an R-15, in an R-five lot. Is it really all that viable? No. And is it, would it be a good idea to remove? That's really up to the City Council to decide, but we can run it through the Planning Commission and find out.
Because it's, to me, it's a big waste of space now because it's not a reasonable project anymore. Not that it was in the first place. So that's just my suggestion.
So we can do that? We can revisit that? Is there anything else from anyone?
One thing, John, you and I, and I really appreciated you taking the time to do it, but when we were making a walk downtown and you were talking about the different buildings and the designs and whatnot, I had made or asked a question regarding tightening up the requirements for when buildings are built down there. So for example, where Video West was at, now it's an empty lot.
Right.
When they build there, we really don't have a whole lot of teeth, do we? I mean, we can tell them how we'd like to see the building built, what kind of design similar to we'd like to see happen, but we don't have any, any kind of regulation code or anything like that that would hold them accountable to that, correct?
Well, we have our design standards and I think they're good enough to prevent something awful from going in.
Well, that's, that's what you said to me, but then you also said, we don't have any real teeth.
So the Planning Commission for the past several months has been working on updates to the design standards to improve, to increase the city's teeth, so to say, in that situation. So the Planning Commission's been working on that and they're actually, thank you for bringing it up, it's probably worth mentioning, that's, that's the thing that they've been working on the most this year, at least this spring and summer.
Because that did come up, because we were talking about that last commission meeting.
And we've had really good discussion about it and we're making really good headway. It's unfortunately just on staff to really write everything down that's been discussed and create a viable design review manual update. And I just haven't had time. So that's, that's why we didn't have the, didn't have that, didn't have the Planning Commission meeting last month is because I just wasn't able to bring them anything that was suitable to review.
Okay.
So we're definitely working on that topic. It's a very important topic.
Yeah, it is.
The Planning Department.
Thank you.
And I recognize the importance to the City Council, too.
Okay.
I know something else that was brought up. It was actually brought up by a couple of people on the Planning Commission. They were talking about tree-lined streets and of course, the importance of which kind of trees actually go into that. Is that something that has continued on or has that actually been something that has been brought forth? Or is it just a talk or what? Because I think that that would be brilliant if we could do that. I think that's one thing that people are really drawn to here in Seidro Wully, is when we have those developments where they do have, they're tree-lined streets. So I'm wondering about that.
Well, I certainly appreciate your support because sometimes the trees aren't always.
Especially when they're deciduous.
Trees aren't always appreciated.
Yeah.
So we do require street trees between 20 and 30 feet on center in all new developments. And we have a, the Public Works Department has a street tree, list of street trees that are acceptable in the planter size. So if you have a five-foot planter, you're allowed certain trees because they look at, you know, what roots do to the sidewalks. And so you can't have certain trees in a small planter because it'll blow up the sidewalk and street or drop a mess. So trees that don't drop berries and have thorns and aren't a nuisance trees. Some trees, you know, start to reproduce all over themselves and send up a bunch of suckers and are difficult to maintain. So maintainable, safe trees that fit within the size allotment are all described in the Public Works Department standards.
Okay.
And is that a requirement? Do we require that? I know in the city of Mount Vernon, they do that in certain development, well, in any development anymore, you have to have so many trees and so many shrubs. And there is a requirement as far as what needs to be done. Do we have anything like that?
Yes, our landscaping chapter, which is Chapter 17.50 of the municipal code, is actually quite lengthy and detailed. It talks about requiring not just street trees, but landscaping requirements for the type of development in the zone. So for example, in the industrial zone, it's like a 10% landscaping. So basically, you put some stuff in the front to soften the look of a, of an industrial development. But if you're in the, they're in like the mixed commercial zone, it's like 25, 20 or 25% of the area needs to be landscaped. And I know that doesn't sound like a lot, but when people are trying to fit parking lots and buildings and sidewalks and seating areas and stuff, you know, that landscape, we're pushing the envelope with how much we require them to do.
So and what about green spaces? So there's been, in my opinion, sympathetic green spaces in some of the developments that have actually happened. It's nothing more than just a small. It's nothing more than just a small plot of land that it really is. Do we have any requirements as far as if it's a certain size development, then there has to be a certain size green space? And then do we also regulate or require so many plants or shrubs or benches or anything like that?
So if we're referring to like a residential subdivision, yes, of course, you have to have the tree-lined streets. And then the amount of recreation area, we call it recreation area, is, is required based on how many units are in it. So you're required to put 8,000 square feet of usable recreation area into any development of 25 units or less, or 25 units down to seven, actually, and below seven. It's kind of a small plat, so we've said, you don't even, don't even bother. But up from that, you're required to put 8,000 square foot. For every unit over 25 units, you're required to put in an additional 100 square feet.
But do we require them to finish it out a certain way? Or is it just, they just have to provide that plot of land?
Yep, so that recreation area has several standards. It needs to be usable for a wide range of users, so not just kids. You know, because you generally think, oh, like a play area. But the planning commission worked hard to expand that to be not only just, not only just kids, but you know, everybody, that'd be so, you know, park benches for, you know, everybody that comes through and wants to sit down.
Do we require that?
And it needs, as part of the landscaping and design review standards, yes, needs to be shown before we even approve a plat. Same with the multifamily, so in apartment building, they're required to have the same ratio. So it's 8,000 square feet to start, and then 100 square feet per additional unit beyond that. And that's part of the landscaping and design review approval process.
Okay, all right.
Sorry, Mary.
Yes.
I just said.
No, you go right ahead.
No, you go, I didn't know.
No, no, you go first.
Okay, thank you. I think a year ago, we had a tree inventory done for the city. And then there was a talk about moving towards being a tree city. Did that ever go anywhere? Did we get any progress on that?
So that was in February of 2020. The Forest Service had hired somebody who was willing to do a tree inventory for us. It came with some strings attached to that. We discussed at the city council, and there was a little bit of trepidation because there were, you know, some requirements for the city and were concerns about our parking, park district needing to follow through with that. So what the council had said is they'd approve a, a tree inventory to be done for us. If someone wants to do a free tree inventory for us, like have at it, great, thank you. But you know, if it's going to come along with the requirement that we then pass an ordinance that talks about tree maintenance requirements, that was a little bit beyond what the council was comfortable with. And then five days later, the city shut down because of, for COVID reasons, and that tree inventory guy has disappeared. So thank you for, you know, having the memory of, of that incident. It really happened, but we haven't heard from that guy since.
Yeah, it was actually Catherine who brought that forward. I had brought it up at a work session.
Right.
And then she carried it forward, which was fantastic, so yeah. Catherine's no longer here, though. Joellen?
Okay, so while we're looking at things, along with what I would like to see is slowing down the housing and development. But aside from that, parking, parking is such a big deal to myself and my constituents because how it's laid out in the past with North Reed, like 600, and the mobile, there just was not enough parking for all of the people that are in there. So really looking at parking and making sure that there's enough for everyone who's living there and coming to visit them, that's something I'd really like to be looked at as well.
Yeah, I, I would actually have to second that. So being new to council here, I've actually, I've been going out and talking to quite a few people around my neighborhood and, and some of the business owners and stuff like that, too. And that's one of the, one of the key things that keeps showing up from the, some of the downtown district business owners are saying, you know, parking, parking, parking. We don't have enough parking a lot of times when, you know, things are actually moving. One of the other things that was brought up is the fact that there have been a lot of people moving in this direction, and rightfully so, right? We all live here because we love it here. But what, what they're saying is being overseen is the amount of parking actually necessary. And if you consider the fact that we actually don't have the industry that we used to have. And we've got a lot of housing developments going in. And so we really need to be careful that we don't become a low-income housing community that is, is taken over with no industry to support it. And, and so with that, you know, we've got some of that, but we've also got a lot of people coming here to commute. I mean, I have a brand-new neighbor that moved here from Olympia that they commute. And so we have to take that into consideration, too, that there are a lot of people moving in, and they may be moving out of the city and maybe choosing to move into a duplex or a townhome or something like that because they love the small-town feel that we have and we present and the traditions we have here. But they're, they're bringing two to three vehicles with them, and they are commuting every day. You know, and so we need to take into consideration. And then when they have their family come visit and that sorts of stuff, then we've got excess parking, and we've got vehicles now on the street. I've, I have a couple neighbors that they've got family staying with them because of the unforeseen circumstances of COVID right now, and they don't know where the family's going to land at this point. But they now have four vehicles at their, you know, at their home when they really should, would normally have two. You know, we've, we've just have a lot of circumstances that obviously were unforeseen based on all of this, but it is adding to it.
We did have this conversation because it's something that, I think before you came on council, council did bring up. We did bring up the idea, the notion that developments need to have, they needed to have driveways. Because that was something that some of the developments were not developing. So did that get into the ordinance? Is that something that is actually in our new development, something that we consider? That anytime there is a development, there has to be driveways that accommodate a couple of cars?
Yeah, so, so I'm going to, I'll kind of go down the list. And there's, of course, exceptions that I'll try to answer questions about later. But in general, in our single-family neighborhoods, the R5, R7, you're required two parking spaces off-street on the property for every house. Whether or not you have a garage, you need two parking spaces onsite. And if you have a garage, you need two parking spaces in front of that garage because nobody parks in their garage. We're on to that, so we didn't find, people try to say, well, we're going to put the garage. No, you need parking in front of the garage because nobody parks in their garage. So that's the R5 and the R7. In the R15, it's based on the number of bedrooms. It's two parking spaces per one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and then three parking spaces for three-bedroom, four parking spaces for four-bedroom. Our central business, our central business district has very detailed parking requirements that the planning commission just worked on. So any new residential development is required to have, based on if there's more than 10 units, it follows kind of those basics, same parking requirements. For smaller, less than 10 units, there is, there are reduced parking standards in the central business district. Off the top of my head, I want to say it's like 0.75 cars, parking spaces per studio. And, you know, 0.85 for a single bedroom, single bedroom, and, you know, 1.5 for a two-bedroom. But it's on a scale like that. And, you know, those are, those are based on actual counts of how, how parking is used in developments. Now, every city's different, and so we tried to bump ours up a little higher than, like, we're not going to use Seattle or Vancouver's parking standards. We bumped them up from there.
So it's, and, and I hear what you're saying, Sarah, because I, too, live in a historic area where driveways are far and few between. So in the older, on the older streets and the older developments, yes, those driveways are far and few between. So we're trying to accommodate that by the new development. And we're actually dealing with an issue right now in Jamison where, because it's an arterial, there just aren't enough driveways and people are parking on the street. It is crazy, and we're hearing about that, we're trying to address it, just so you know.
Right, well, and then just looking, you know, like Klinger Estates and some of the other more high-density housing units there. I mean, it's driving through that, you've got, there's, it's not two lanes anymore. You know, you've got, you're driving down the middle because there's cars parked all the way down, all sides, and, and all the way through the entire development. And so it just not only, it becomes a safety hazard as well because you've got a lot of kids in there, and they're kicking balls and kicking them into the streets and running around, and their animals are loose, and, you know, and so it's just.
And it was because of Klinger.
The reality of all of it.
It was, it was because of Klinger Estates that some changes were made, so, yeah.
Can I elaborate more on that? So parking is a big, big deal, and it is not on the back of the radar, it's on the front. And we have learned from the mistakes of the past and have made those adjustments moving forward. Here's an example. Our code is spot-on. I'm in the downtown 48 right here, which would be the closest thing to the UVMU because I could walk out my door, walk to Pioneer Marketplace, come to Metcalf. I drive less, but I still need my car.
Right.
Period. So the way we have the code right now, I'm in a two-bedroom. So for two bedrooms, there's two parking spaces required. I will tell you, we are absolutely maxed. People are parking in the commercial spots, there's threats from the property manager that is parked on the side. They're going to tow you. People are parked all around, even the lumber. So yeah, we get it. But our numbers of the way we're actually looking forward are pretty good. And loosening that, I'm not in favor of loosening that at all, because it does work, and I live it every day, so I get it. In the downtown business court here, right along Metcalf, the discussion is, you have people with pickup trucks that are enormous.
Oh, yes.
Right, so they're pushing on the side. So the discussion's even gone that far. They're worried about the size of vehicles, not only the amount, other places people can park to spread things out, along the railroad tracks, city identified areas that we control as a city. So it is definitely not a backburner issue, not even close to it.
Okay, and then off the topic of parking, what about looking at, with these developments and stuff going in, are we looking at the density of them and how they relate to the school district and their boundary lines? Because that's another huge, huge thing that I have been hit with over and over again is the overcrowding in the school districts, and how putting in some of these, you know, some of the properties that are being annexed in, some of the ways that they are zoned, the amount of families and children that are going into those schools, and, and how I, obviously, you know, I've been told, well, that's, that's the school district's problem. But as a city, it does become the city's problem as well, and we cannot overrun the school district by, by putting in too much in, in, you know, these specific areas. And unfortunately, there are only so many areas to be able to build and to do. And as a property owner, they do have the right to do with what they've been zoned their property as. So I completely understand that. But we kind of, we kind of get in a big catch-22 there, and I think we really need to be careful.
So just last month, Commissioner Johnson and I had that discussion personally. Because we looked at the density that we have coming on in. I said to Commissioner Johnson, I said, how are we going to handle the amount of people? Because I'm figuring, and John should attest to this, I'm figuring we're going to have maybe another 2,000-plus residents within the next 18 months.
Right.
So if I look at the composition of who's coming in and the number of kids that they're going to bring in, and again, the school district is a separate entity.
Correct.
Right, that they need to accommodate the growth and get numbers from the city of what's coming in. So yeah, you bet, it's, it's going to be a challenge, absolutely, yeah.
And if I can just speak real quickly to the whole school district thing. So, you know, the individual school districts and the lines that are drawn, that's, that's the school board's jurisdiction, not the city council's. The only real jurisdiction that the city would have regarding that and its impact on the schools, per se, would be regulation of the growth of the city in general. So, you know, even with where and how it's growing within the, the city, that really doesn't factor into the school district. Because the school district is the one who ultimately draws, draws those lines, and, you know, we adjust them depending upon growth. So, you know, it, it is a little bit of a catch-22, and, you know, you're dealing with two different jurisdictions of power. So, you know, just to kind of keep that in mind, that, you know, if you're trying to avoid Evergreen or Central being overcrowded, you know, that's, that's more of a school board decision and not necessarily a council decision. Now, if you're wanting the overall school district or other facilities that may be utilized by residents of Sejro Wully, you know, you feel like they're at capacity, you know, then, then that's more of a city trying to, you know, regulate or control the growth of, of the overall populace of the city.
Well, I'm talking just in general, not a specific school, so to speak. But, you know, we have one middle school, we have one high school. Everything feeds into it, even, you know, out, out of just county feeds into it as well. And so, you know, when you're looking at a, a one-for-five, if somebody was to build in a one-for-five and annexing in property and all of a sudden it's, it's a R7, you know, you've got a lot more heads there to count. And, and looking at the long-term growth, I'm just wanting to make sure that we can kind of have an open dialogue and communication. And obviously, school board isn't here representing for anything, but just, just keeping all of that in, you know, in front of us, that it's not something that's, that's left behind as well. Because, you know, children K through 12 are coming through our community, and we just want to be aware of all of that and make sure that everybody's, you know, properly. The school district, I have all the faith that they're going to, to make the changes or do what they need to do. I just want to make sure that the, the growth doesn't happen so fast that it becomes an overburden in that, you know. And the same, the same goes for the, for the fire district, the police, you know, all of that stuff. Because it is something that, that does, you know, we can, we can make one decision, but there, there are long-term effects.
Well, another, another element to this, too, is the, the actual building of facilities.
Right.
You know, I'll put a little jab out here and say that, you know, the school board did, in fact, propose three different bonds over the past, you know, six years, which would have greatly helped reduce the impact on our facilities, but all of them were shot down. One was in just a single elementary school, one actually gave expansion to almost every elementary school. So, you know, that's something that if, if it's a community concern, you know, that has been put out there. I will put a little kudos out to the city proper. The city proper actually had the greatest amount of support for those, probably because they saw the impact much more clearly than the outlined areas. But, you know, the fact of the matter is, the, if you're really wanting to lessen the impact of individual facilities, you got to pass a bond.
Right.
Yes, John?
Can I follow up on that? So the, the school district has their own capital facilities plan.
Right.
And it's informed by our capital facilities plan, which we, we plan for our 20 years of population growth. And like I've mentioned to previous city council members, we're well within our projected 20-year growth. It's happening a little faster at this moment, but, you know, for the previous five years, it was so low. You know, we're just catching up to where we expected to be. So in our comprehensive plan, and particularly the capital facilities plan, we've, we've actually worked with the school district, and their capital facility is part, plan is part of our capital facilities plan, which our capital facilities plan also addresses police, fire, parks, stormwater. Like all, all of the, the city infrastructure is addressed, and we study it to see what we need to do to accommodate our projected 20-year growth. And we're required, that's what the Growth Management Act requires us to do. That is, that is the core piece of, of, of the Growth Management Act. That is, that is the core piece of, of, of the Growth Management Act. Study what you have, look at where you're going, see what you need to do to get there. And so that's our entire comprehensive plan, uh, in a nutshell, that we update every seven or eight years. And also the transportation plan is part of that and that's kind of updated and tweaked even more often because there's specific projects that need to be done and the council approves those projects as they, as they come through. And Mark does a fantastic job. Um, couldn't, couldn't ask for a, a better person in charge of our transportation. Uh, so the school district is, you know, they're, they know, we're in communication, they, they know, we even update them every time, we give them notice every time a project is proposed, just to, you know, anything that is more than four units, we let them know. So they, they know it's coming, they, they're well-versed in what our projections are. So they're, they're prepared to, to grow and handle the amount of projected growth in the school, in not only the school district, but particularly in the city.
Okay, is there anything else?
Well, I was just gonna um, um, mention that, because you had said you're living through it right now, so then you're seeing the impact of like a two-bedroom. When I think of a two-bedroom, I think of, okay, myself and then my husband, we each have a vehicle and then our sixteen-year-old kid has one and then his kid, his friends are coming over to visit. And so I think it's just more than just the, the two-bedroom, two people because of the, the kids up and running and, and driving. And so I'm a real big, if, if, if you see it and we're seeing the problems with it, let's move that to the forefront so that these other um, buildings that are coming in don't have to suffer the same consequences.
Yeah, you know, it's called the law of unintended consequences at times, right? So here's what, here what the reality is, right? So in the downtown forty-eight, you have forty-eight units, it's a mix of two and one bedrooms. I have a two-bedroom, but I use my other bedroom as an office. I don't have two cars, I have one. What you have is like people in one, a one-bedroom, boyfriend, girlfriend, husband, wife, you got two cars. Then you got people that they bring their other cars, they leave them there and that's the property manager's problem. But I'm just saying from the density of what we require, it, it, it's a correct uh, number to do the best you can. And you're right, you're always going to have that additional car or whatever, but we don't want to make it any less because like I said, I lived through it, but I'm watching other people park along the street. And there's been times that there's been zero parking in my complex and I've had to park on the street. So parking is a big deal and you've all been hurt and then we totally get it. And depending on where you're at within the city, within the different zones, there are going to be different impacts. But when you're doing the high-density stuff, I'm not in favor of allowing that by, by any means whatsoever. If you're going to put in a two-bedroom apartment, regardless, you know, assume that you're going to have two cars because we also have it that depending on the number of units that go in, you have an additional requirement, I think it's six or eight units, that we require another additional parking space for guests and things like that. Super Bowl weekend, you can't get anything because people are having parties and things like that. So it's an ebb and flow and it's never perfect, but the requirements of what we have on the books right now seem to be okay.
Um, okay, well, then I would, if, if what you have on the books right now is what you're stuck with, with downtown forty-eight, I'd suggest revising it to be more parking than less at what you have currently. That's all I'm saying.
The downtown forty-eight in particular, um, that was before we had any parking requirement in the CBD. So we've actually changed it um, to, to require more parking.
Um, just kind of adding on to this, too, um, I've seen it around town as well, but something that's around the corner is the transportation as a service. And that's, you know, Uber-type services, but those are growing in types, both delivery and transportation. Have we given any consideration to like large apartment or condos that have a pickup-drop-off area to reduce the number of cars and incentivize more people to use transportation as a service?
So like a dedicated Uber pickup-drop-off spot?
Yes.
And, and bigger cities have, in, in addition to something like that, will have um, incentives for like Zip cars, like so car sharing where, you know, it's like getting, it's like getting one of those carts at the airport, you know, you run your credit card and you get, you know, you get the keys and you get to drive the car. Um, we've never explored that in Sejewoli because I don't know that, that's something that a more rural community like us would, users would typically use. We've never had anybody from any of those companies come and talk to us, but it's along the same lines as that, is, you know, like, how do we encourage that? Um, now, the answer is typically, in other cities, if they provide dedicated car, uh, Zip car parking, they'll allow reduced parking. So that's now what, we're trying to encourage more Zip car using or, you know, car sharing, like you're saying, or, or Uber. But we don't necessarily want to incentivize that by reducing parking.
Oh, I agree. I don't think reducing parking's the, the way to go, but I know we have Uber Eats here, we have Grubhub, and with COVID, those have really skyrocketed and I think that's just the beginning, that transportation as a service is coming. Uh, it might be a while before it gets here, but I think in addition to more parking, that could be an alternative solution, too.
Yeah, they do have a pullover spot, so I'm going to use downtown forty-eight because I'm, I'm familiar with it. So what they have is right in front of the front door, you have two handicapped, two handicapped, and then a really big open area for exactly that, for maybe moving trucks. And the Grubhub people use it all the time. So yes, there's definitely, and I think that's probably in the code, that there's definitely a spot for pickup and delivery as well as things larger than that. You can easily get two cars at the same time at a place like that, an Uber and a Grubhub drop-off. And I think that is specified in the code.
I think also, too, in our comprehensive plan, we have um, a lot of walking paths and trails that are going to be developed. We already have quite a few that are developed, so I, I appreciate the fact that you're bringing this up, Brendan, because we, we've entered a new era, we definitely have. And the younger generation actually, for the most part, would rather ride bikes than drive a car. And we see that in Seattle quite a bit. So I'm wondering, within our own city limits, if maybe we need to be looking at being more bike-friendly. So in Seattle, they actually have a strip, and I know they have it out here on Highway twenty-two in some places, where they have a strip where people can ride their bikes. Is that something that maybe we want to consider? Because that is the, kind of the coming wave, is that people are becoming more conscientious about their health. And it's, it appears with the individuals that we're meeting here that there is a much younger generation that's moving in, they love the hiking, they love the biking, they love the trails that we offer. So could we make that, that our roads more accommodating to those individuals? Is that something we can look at?
So that's uh, transportation plan stuff that Mark Freiberger could probably address better than me, but I'll make a, a, a vague attempt. Um, I do know, you know, along Highway twenty, the, the Public Works Department has been slowly building out the multi-use trail. Um, you know, the uh, basically a ten-foot sidewalk on one side of the street to, to encourage that type, type of use and to provide safety for all users. Uh, I believe that's also built into the Jones-Johnliner Trail Corridor and other various uh, corridors throughout the city. There is a uh, multimodal, you know, bike and pedestrian map that uh, the transportation plan has, and that shows those planned routes through the city where uh, bicycle and pedestrian facilities are intended. Now, of course, we require, on all new roads, sidewalks, on new roads that we, you know, you don't, we don't see that many, but uh, when we do build new roads, it requires sidewalks. Um, but only arterials, I believe, would requ, would allow for, for bike lanes or uh, bike paths on the side of the road. But it's definitely part of it now, is the extent what the city council is hoping for, you know, that's probably something we can discuss with Mark Freiberger.
Yeah, I think we need to be more progressive in our thinking when it comes to that kind of mode of transportation. Um, any other comments or questions?
I just have a comment on the bike. I actually love living here because there are no bike trails. When I see them out on the main strip and they're in my way, it's extremely aggravating, but that's just my thought for bikes on the um, transportation mode.
Gotta share the road. Okay, if there is nothing else, John, do you have anything else or can we wind this meeting up and get people home for a scoop of ice cream, which is what I want to do?
All I had, I just wanted to give everybody the opportunity to have a good discussion like we've had tonight. Thank you.
Right, thank you, thank you very much. And thank you Planning Commission for being here. And we can't say this enough, we appreciate the work that you do. I mean, it is dedication, it is appreciation for our community, it is, uh, it goes beyond really, um, because there's, because there's others who are being paid for the job that they do, but you don't, you volunteer. It's your time, it's your energy, and it's your compassion. So thank you so much for dedicating all of that to the city of Sejewoli, to the citizens of Sejewoli, and to future generations.
You know, thank you for that acknowledgement because we really do spend a lot of time on everything that we put together. See, everybody in this room, we are not casual observers. We know exactly what we're doing and we're making decisions and putting things into law that we, we, we cannot take without the, the, the biggest thought that what we do impacts so many other lives. And that's very important.
I, you know, I agree with that. I think overall, you put probably more time and energy into what you present than what the council, than what we do as a council.
This is our job.
So we appreciate the work that you do.
Thank you.
Thank you. And if that is it, we are adjourned.
The end. Yeah.
Exactly.
You know what you ought to do is just record it and then play it over, over again next time.
If it was that easy.
Bye, have a good night.
See you, Glenn. We're going to get together soon on that recycle.